A little after seven, I'll call the whole public school board meeting to order. Noting that we do have a quorum with all board members present. And Dr. Hornak, if you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Oh, you don't have a flag, do you?
We do, yes.
All right.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Board, our mission is to innovate, educate, and inspire empowering all students to make a positive impact in their communities. Excuse me as I get oriented here. The vision of our school district is to empower our learning community to make a positive impact on the world.
Okay, we'll move to changes and additions to the agenda. Joey Ganses, is he one of the participants out there?
I do not believe so, sir.
I don't see him on the list.
All right, so we'll need to scratch 5.1 student rep report. And Dr. Holgren, did you have the Inham School Officials Association meeting?
I don't believe anyone has met. I tend to have a conflict at that time, so I actually have not been getting emails about it, so I don't know.
All right, so we'll scratch 5.1 to 5.2. So we'll move to public comments. And for anyone that would like to, this is your time to address the Board of Education. And remember, it's not a dialogue between yourself and the board members. However, we may follow up with you later on for conversation. There is a five-minute time limit per speaker. We ask that you be courteous. We also ask that you do not use any employees' name or student names. And lastly, if you could state your name for the record. We have those that have signed up in advance. Ms. Bureau, I don't know if you have any of those?
Yes, we have Summer Darden. Is Summer here?
I don't see that name on the attendees list, but that doesn't mean she's not here under a different name.
If she could click raise hand.
Trustee Bureau, I do see Sally Hawk Harrison's hand up, if you would like to move.
I see Sally's hand up as well.
We can come back to Mrs. Darden if she joins us. Ms. Bureau, do you have anybody else that's signed up?
No others that are signed up, but as Dr. Hornak pointed out, Sally Hawk Harrison's hand is up.
Okay, Sally, if you would address the board.
Yes, I don't know. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, I am loving the support that the people are getting from the virtual learning Facebook page and all the rebuttal that people are giving to the IT department and the school teachers and everybody that is helping with this virtual learning. I know there are still people struggling with it and they struggle to sign on every morning, but I just love the fact that there is really good support out there. And so I give you kudos. I top my hat, tip my hat to you and all of that. So I just think that that's wonderful. The other thing is this Zoom logo to get in tonight. The only place that Charlie and I could find it was on the Holt School Board page. It was not added to my little promo for you guys like it has been in the past. And I don't know if our little gal, Ms. Lopez, was just too busy to do that because she's usually the one that does that. But I just think that it's wonderful that we can have everybody there, even though we're not all in the same room, that that it can be a part of this. Then the other question, I know you're not going to give me any answers, but my question is, Mr. Perry, Ms. Robel, and Ms. Dalton, you're up for reelection. Are you going to stay with us and be our cheerleaders on this board, or are you going to leave us? I know you can't answer me, right? I see you smiling, Amy. Okay, that's all I got. I love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to address the board?
Actually, I wanted to give a quick public comment, if I could, as a parent. It's Christine Lopez. Today, for the first time, I participated in the food sign-up yesterday through Food Services for Nicholas Lopez, who is a sixth grader at Washington Woods. Based on the recent feedback that it could be for any family to take part in. And so I signed up yesterday and went today and picked up our week's worth of food for Nick. First of all, it was extremely organized. And when I brought everything home, I got a half a gallon of milk. I got a bag of fresh produce, apples, pears, lettuce, broccoli, tons of stuff. And then Nicholas really enjoyed opening the two bags of stuff that we brought home for his lunch. And he was really excited to see some things that are familiar to him and that he enjoys through the school lunch program. And so I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the folks in Food Service. He said that this week, a lot of folks out on social media shared, you know, this is for anyone, please sign up, it's free for all families. And I think based on that feedback, Evan said that this week comparative, it went up exponentially. And he sent me pictures. I'll share the pictures of the coolers and things with all of you tomorrow that he sent to me. You won't believe the amount of food we had. And again, they just handled it like champs. So I wanted to take an opportunity as a parent to recognize that program and to encourage other families. It does not mean it's not an income thing. If your children would like lunch, you can sign up, swing through, pick it up, and you're on your way. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Just in time. No, I was joking.
All right, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the board minutes. Board members, you have three of those in front of you. The special meeting of August 10th, the regular board meeting of August 10th, and then our special board meeting on the 20th. So if you have a chance, I'll entertain a motion.
There's also an amended minutes from the statutory meeting of July 13th. While I was doing some policy stuff, it was noted that there was a piece that needed to be in there that was voted on that wasn't quite fully in there with my being gone. I probably didn't scrutinize the minutes as much as I should have this last meeting because I wasn't voting, because I wasn't there.
Was that the yellow, the highlighted, yellow section highlighted?
Yes, the yellow highlighted. It needed clarification so we could actually update some policy.
Okay, I move that we accept.
You want Julie to make the motion if she was the one that requested it, just to make sure that the revised wording matches what she wanted?
The revised wording does match, and I will gladly make the motion for, to approve the amended minutes for the statutory organizational meeting of July 13th, 2020.
I will second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Julie, can we do a roll call?
Helgren?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Bakken?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Bureau, yes. Robel?
Yes.
Okay, special more board meeting minutes of August 10th.
Ben, I wasn't sure. I'm not sure your microphone is working 100%. That was very quiet.
You guys hear me okay?
Can now.
Geez, okay. I will make a motion to approve the committee of the whole special meeting minutes from August 10th.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Bureau, if we could do a roll call?
Robel?
Yes.
Bureau, yes. Perry?
Yes.
Bakken?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Helgren?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to the regular board meeting of the same date.
I move that we accept the regular board meeting minutes from Monday, August 10th.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Bureau, if we could do a roll call?
Dalton?
Yes.
Bakken?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Bureau, yes. Robel?
Yes.
One last set of meeting minutes would be the special board meeting of August 20th.
I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting committee of the whole minutes from August 20th.
Support.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Bureau, if we could do a roll call?
Bakken?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Bureau, yes. Robel?
Yes.
Helgren?
Yes.
And Dalton?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Board members, you have the documentation for the bills that were paid for the month of October.
I'll make a motion that we pay the bills.
A second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Bureau, if we could do a roll call?
Perry?
Yes.
Julie, Bureau, yes. Robel?
Yes.
Helgren?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Bakken?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to gifts. Dr. Hornak, I don't know if you would like to go down through these and maybe explain background of these. And is there any reason why we can't just approve all these together?
No, I would recommend that once I give a summary, that someone makes a motion to accept all gifts. So first of all, 4.6.1 was a $5,000 donation to Sycamore Elementary School. Okay, that's unrestricted to Sycamore in their internal fund, which was wonderful. I'm happy to report that our IT Director Kevin Galbreth wrote a grant for six exterior Wi-Fi access points, and those are currently being installed in parking lots throughout our learning community from Diamond Dale and then across accordingly. That was for $22,379. Our Kroger Community Rewards Program continues to thrive. We've been somewhere around the 1,400 to 1,500, but we popped up over 1,600. And now to date, we have accepted over $18,000 in donations in approximately two years from Kroger. Now, just as a little sidebar, me as a shopper, my benefits remain the same in Holt Public benefits as well. So the gas benefits and the other benefits that occur with the Kroger card, nothing changes, except that Holt Public gets a nice little check every quarter. So that's wonderful. I'm in 4.6.4, the Holt Education Foundation met a couple weeks ago and they said, hey, what does the district need? And at the time, we were getting ready to do a school supply fund drive, and we were short on school supplies. And so the foundation said we will allocate $1,500 for school supplies. Well, what that turned into was 50 school supply packs for every school. So depending on your level, if you're at elementary, you got glue sticks, paper, pencils, scissors, rulers, on and on and on. If you're at the high school, that was scaled up for high schoolers, but each building got 50. So we prepared 500 school supply packs out of that. And our Pay It Forward account continues to generate some funds, 400 for school supplies and 350 for this food pantry bus. So all in all, another wonderful example of the great support that our community continues to share.
I move that we accept with gratitude the generous gifts and grants that we have received.
Highly support.
May I ask a question? I wondered how it was determined which, well, I guess I wonder which buildings received the Wi-Fi, external Wi-Fi access points, and how that was determined?
I don't have that in front of me at my home office here. With that, I wonder, would you like a response tonight? Or would you like, because I think there's someone on the call that could respond, or I can report to you later?
That's fine. I mean, you can definitely report later. It was my hope that they were spread out and there was consideration given to where maybe Wi-Fi was less accessible and those sort of things. And perhaps that's an obvious answer. I just wanted to confirm that.
Well, I'll confirm with you as soon as I can, but I believe that is the case.
Thank you.
I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Ms. Bureau, if you could do a roll call for us?
Robel?
Yes.
Helgren?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Bakken? Bakken?
Yes.
Yes.
And Bureau, yes.
All right, we'll move to reports and we'll jump down to 5.3, the whole Equity and Access Team. Ms. Dalton, that's you.
Thank you. I have a few issues that I'd like to mention this evening. First of all, tomorrow is the first day of National Hispanic Heritage Month, which recognizes the contributions and influences of Hispanic Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. Additionally, I want to mention before our next meeting, Monday, October 12th, is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Another issue that I'd like to discuss this evening is a resolution that I'm requesting the board approve to declare racism is a public health crisis as it adversely impacts our students, families, staff, and community at large. With your permission, President Period, I'd like to read the resolution.
Sorry, I was muted. Please do.
Thank you. Whereas the Board of Education of the Holt Public School District in Holt, Michigan, is a public school district in Inham and Eaton Counties, Michigan. And whereas there is a long history of racism, discrimination, and segregation within our country, beginning over 400 years ago, when enslaved human beings from African countries and of African descent were brought to what would become the United States. And whereas this history has negatively impacted health, educational, and economic outcomes for many racial groups and specifically Black individuals. And whereas extensive peer-reviewed research demonstrates that this history has had a lasting detrimental impact on the educational outcomes of Black students and other students of color in our district and others through curriculum, discipline, and school climate. And whereas racism has been determined to be a social determinant of health inequities through its direct physiological impact on individual and population health, as well as indirectly through its impact on educational, socioeconomic, and other social structures, which can lead to negative long-term health outcomes. And whereas the board acknowledges that our students are a diverse body, of which 10.3% are Black, 63.4% are white, 12.3% are Latinx, 3.4% are Asian, 0.3% are Indigenous, 10.3% are multiracial, all with diverse experiences. And whereas the board has existing policies and programs to promote racial equity. And whereas the board desires to further implement vigorous actions and share stronger statements recognizing all students who are entrusted in our care. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Holt Public School District that Section 1, the board hereby declares that racism is a public health crisis that adversely impacts our students, our families, our staff, and our community at large. Section 2, the board directs the superintendent and/or his designees to solicit an external organization to conduct an initial equity study and a biennial review in order to effect school and system transformation toward racial, disability, and other forms of educational justice. Section 3, the board directs the district to recognize and honor Indigenous peoples' contributions and the impact that history has had on their heritage within our curriculum. Section 4, the board directs the superintendent and/or his designees to work with our employees, to work with race and other identity-based employee groups, focused on supporting and increasing staff climate, morale, and camaraderie. Section 5, the board charges its committee of the hall and/or curriculum committee to research and integrate racially and culturally relevant elements into the curriculum and within the school buildings. Section 6, the board will seek to build a community and reduce incidence of racial bias and discrimination through required diversity, equity, and inclusion trainings focused on race and implicit bias for its staff, while also committing to monitor incidents that are reported and sharing statistics on its results. Section 7, the board charges its committee of the hall and/or policy committee to develop and/or revise policies and protocols to explicitly ensure our Black, Latinx, and other marginalized students and staff are not disproportionately affected by racism. Section 8, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of the board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the board.
You're muted again, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Dr. Algren.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. And with that, I will accept a motion for the resolution.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution to declare racism is a public health crisis.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any other discussion?
I want to thank Ms. Dalton for her work on this important issue. So, very important.
Thank you. I also definitely must add that this work comes from years of work that the HEAT team has done and employees within Holt Public Schools have done and continue to do to work together as a team to create these changes in the district. It really is a group effort. Thank you.
Ms. Bureau, if we could do a roll call?
I have to find my cursor first. Okay, Helgren?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Bakken?
Yes.
Robel?
Absolutely, yes.
Bureau, yes. And Mr. Perry?
Yes. All right, thank you. Motion passes. It will move to...
Mr. Perry, may I say one more thing, please? So at the last couple of board meetings, we've had a subgroup of the HEAT team briefly discuss the work that they are working on. And this evening, I would like for Jessica Cotter to share just briefly the work that we've been doing toward establishing anti-discrimination procedures within the district.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. So the subcommittee that Ms. Dalton and I are on have the task of developing procedures for any member of our learning community to use, should they feel there's been a discriminatory event they've been involved in. Some of you are aware that there are pretty robust Title IX procedures. I believe Ms. Bureau may speak to those briefly that are federally mandated, that we make visible on our website. And we felt as an Equity and Access Team that issues of discrimination went beyond sex discrimination solely, and that while we definitely want to honor and follow up with investigations revolving sex discrimination, we also want to include other types of discrimination as well. So we are trying to apply those same robust procedures for Title IX to Title VI and VII, which would extend to protecting students, staff, and community members who experience discrimination within Holt Public Schools. I would guarantee them right to procedure, due process, a voice. That we, as an administrative team, would then track those events and use them not just to remediate the incident itself, but also to proactively analyze our situations, educate ourselves, and work to do better. Which we meet next week. We're hoping to have them ready on the website very shortly.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cotter, for that. We'll move to board policy update. Ms. Bureau, that's you.
I have been doing a lot of policy stuff. So normally, we have our fall update. We have a couple things to cover. Normally, we have our fall update in October. Niola was super busy the last six months, but they were able to squeak it out early and had it prepared for August. Since we're a little short on the board, and many of us are short on time, we're going to push the fall update into October and maybe put the new trustee on that committee possibly. I don't know. That's to be determined. So a few notes we have, you'll see that there is a resolution, another resolution in the board packet. It's to grant emergency powers to the superintendent for the 2021 school year. Over the last six months, eight months of COVID, many people have questioned... policies that may be affected by it. And so every month we're like, well, there should be more rolling out. This is going to encompass it for the year. If you read down through the resolution, it gives Dr. Horneck authority to temporarily waive or modify board policies for the school year only. And they are policies that should only, he should be only using it for policies that are deemed necessary to comply with the executive orders and follow the guidance of both the Health Department and or Department of that or whomever to make, make the, get the districts going. We can rescind this at any time with full majority vote. Otherwise it grandfather's at the end of the year. It will give him the authority to enter into contracts without board approval for for purchase of things that we definitely need for COVID. So our last computer order would fall under this. They can go ahead and order it before getting the board approval. He just needs to let us know like as soon as possible. So emergency situations and also to implement policies or procedures that are in the executive order, but maybe not in our policies and procedures like hand washing, mask wearing, things like that. So I'm going to ask for for us to approve this resolution, knowing that it will grandfather at any point in time, we feel we need to do that beforehand, totally within our totally can do that. The other item we have, everything should be updated for all of our past policies should all be Title IX. Everything should be all updated. I've been working with publishers at Neola, so our policy thing should be looking really fantastic right now. We have, see, the next policy update we have, I'm going to warn you, you know how time to time we revisit policies that maybe we just tweaked in the last little bit. Because of the last of some bills that were signed in August at the governor's office, we will be revisiting some of these. We will be revisiting 4362.01, which is threatening behavior towards staff members. We just revised this within the last six months. We're revising it again, or potentially will be. We'll also be looking at 5610, a removal of removal, suspension, expulsion and permanent exclusion of students. We've looked at that within the last 10 months. Due process rights, 5611. Again, we just did that. Part of the reasoning for doing this is they want to or with the new House bills, we need to go back and add preponderance of evidence into a couple of these. That is the standard that we chose to use in our Title IX. So actually going back and adding it into these will will bring everything in line and bring it up into compliance of the law. 7440 is going to be revised. We do have this policy. There is a recent change in one of the House bills that allows school districts to be able to install temporary locking devices on doors. And that will cover this. And then we'll have a new policy that we're going to look at, which is protective facial coverings during pandemic or epidemic. It's a new policy. Haven't looked at it. I don't believe Mrs. Dalton has taken a look at it yet. And then under Dr. Horneck's administrative guidelines, there's a hand washing protocol guidelines for us to look at. So we've got a little bit of work next month to do on that. One of the services also that Neola provides us is when we get these updates, they will also send us some guidance on things that we should be looking at in March. We had, what should we be looking at? Handbooks. Make sure you have this included. So it was really nice to be able to check back and forth on our handbooks and look at that. This month, actually, they gave us a list on policy titles that maybe are not looked at on a frequent basis or touched. So let's go back and look at these and just kind of make sure that things are all tight and neat there. So that, that's a nice list. It looks like there's maybe 20 on there. And again, there are ones that are not normally revised often. So just to review them, bring them to light, also while going through my thousands of emails on my computer, I found the list that I will read forward to Dr. Horneck, and it's a list that I had made of policies that as we were making policies, I this should be pushed out to this group of people. This should be grouped. And it was actually a small list. It's not my big giant list. It was a, these are the priority ones we should do. And I refound that list. So after sending it out like a year ago to Kevin, I noticed that this is one of the things that we're picking up again. So I will resend that list to you. And so that can go out to the people that we need it to. I think that's all we have for the policy other than approving this resolution. Does anybody have any questions on this resolution or why it's needed? Anything? Can I just say, I feel like everybody's eyes glaze over when we get to this part of the agenda.
I actually think it's very interesting. I would like to move that we approve the resolution to grant emergency powers to the superintendent during the 2021 school year.
A second.
I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? I just want to point out, I'm excited as much as you are, Julie.
I will never believe that, Mr. Perry. Never.
Let's try a roll call.
Alrighty. Find my post. I don't remember who went first last time. So we'll start with Mr. Backen.
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Bureau, yes. Ms. Robel?
Yes.
Mr. Halgren?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Excellent.
All right, board members, as you know, Ms. Culligan has moved out of the district. So last week, I accepted her, the week before, accepted her resignation. And therefore we've got to replace a board member. And Ms. Bureau, if you want to take us through what we're looking at this week and next week to do that.
Yes, um, am I still? Okay, yes. So with Christine, we put together a timeline for this month. We posted on all of our social media sites and sent it to the newspapers for publishing in both Lansing State Journal and the Community News that we were, had a trustee position appointment available that is in, if I remember correctly, the Lansing State Journal all this week. It went for seven days and then it was going to be published in the Community News this week. So within an hour of it being published on social media, friends, can I say, I had people inquiring. So things look good. There, I do have a couple of, I do have resumes and cover letters. I will push those out to you. Our posting closes at noon on Friday, noon on Friday, the 18th. I will gather any and all that we have. I will make copies of them, give everybody a number and then send them out to you on Friday. So you have all weekend to peruse them. We should, in, I expect to get more this week. I've noticed the last two times we've done this, we get closer it gets to the end date, the more we have. So we are hoping next week on the 22nd or 23rd to be able to meet and review those to pick potential candidates for interview. In the past, if we've had six or less, we've went ahead and interviewed all. What else do I have to say about that? And with our, with our interviews being the last week of September, no later than October 1st to give us time to swear in and seat the appointment. Check my notes real quick. So we will need to look at, and there's a survey monkey that was created unless we can all come up with a time for this next week. Also, I sent you all an email the same day that the, that we made the it can see announcement. I sent you an email and it had in there all of the questions that we've used the last two times and then some other questions that I had in a folder that we had looked at the other two times. So I need you all to look through the questions, pick 10 or so of your, of the ones, yes, these are good. Send them to me. I'll compile them all. And at that next meeting as well, then we'll approve any questions that we want to have for the interview process. Any questions on the process or the timeline?
I have one quick question. I assume that the interviews will be over Zoom. So I, I wonder if our questions, maybe we have a larger pool so that we're not asking all the same questions. I understand the benefit of asking all the same questions. But I wonder about the disadvantage to the first or second interviewees as compared to the later ones if we're asking the same questions. Or do we not think that's an issue?
Historically, we've excluded any other interviewees in during the first interview. So.
But if it's live, I mean, I'm, there's, do you know what I mean? I don't think there's really any way to, to exclude representatives of that individual or something.
That's true. That's true. And, and it was hard for us to do that before, even when we were face to face because we would we would ask to rely on, you know, fairness of the process. So I, I don't know if there's, are there any thoughts or concerns about how we do that?
I think, like you said, the, when we did them live, everybody knew that the process needed to be fair and to be fair. You know, you can't be there for those questions and everybody abided by it. It could happen, but I think most people who are applying for this position understand that it would do that.
Okay.
But it's, it's a great point, though.
Could I mention Dr. Horneck or Laura Culligan at the Community Action Task Force meeting on Wednesday? I may or may not be able to make it. If we could also make that announcement there, these are already individuals who are involved in the community. I assume they already know, but just so they know.
Good suggestion.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Bureau?
Not in regards to seating of the trustee, no.
Okay. Board members, as you know, Laura Culligan was our vice president and therefore this evening we need to replace that position. All of the board positions would be up after the first of the year. So this would take us through January 1st.
Are you seeking nominations?
I am.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Dalton to be vice president.
I would happily do it for the remaining three months that we have.
A second.
Any other nominations? Okay, I'll close the nominations. I have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Nope. I think Amy would do an excellent job. So I have no, has no reservations in nominating her.
And Ms. Bureau, if we could do a roll call.
Halgren?
Yes.
Dalton?
I will abstain.
Backen?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Bureau, yes. Perry?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Pave stays about the same, eh?
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Horneck, what do you have for us?
Okay, thank you, thank you. This has been an awesome meeting so far. I appreciate you as a board adopting that resolution earlier and then just being detail oriented on replacing trustee Culligan and making sure that we have a full executive team. So thank you so much. Much of our academic work, as you know, is captured by our curriculum directors. So in an effort not to duplicate, I'm going to just kind of pop around. Couple of things I'd like to share out of the gate. We served over 5,000 meals today. Okay, I want to say that again, 5,000 meals today. Over 600 families came through the high school for pickup and another 300 or so were out at our remote sites. So our food service team is just, just doing it. So I'm really, really tickled. Have to back up a little bit. Just normal every so often would like to remind you that from time to time when we're served a lawsuit or required to investigate a concern, we've been advised by our legal counsel to inform the public that at the request of our attorney, we're not able to comment due to the pending litigation. This is also a case when the investigation has been turned over to the authorities. So that's just something I say on a regular basis. Croaker Award, we already talked about. Special, special recognition. Our employees have gone above and beyond to make a difference during this unprecedented time. There's no doubt that this is not easy work. Okay, the faculty and staff have done an outstanding job caring for our students in our first two weeks of school. And it, the priority has been on the well being of our, our students. And I would like to throw our staff into that. We need to care for our, our people. Our tech team behind the scenes, they're overwhelmed, but they continue to work nonstop to complete work order tickets even on weekends. At one point, our work orders exceeded 1,500. I think we're down to somewhere about 500. We never would have adopted a new SIS Student Information System during a pandemic, but we were too far in to the game financially and with people power and, and time to turn back. And we're doing the best we possibly can. I appreciate the support our community and Grace has provide, they provided us. It's not been easy. That's all there is to it. Our Holt Public Community Task Force has been referenced a little bit in the community, excuse me, the Committee of the Hole. And again, tonight, we have approximately 65 people working to help us on our return to school plans, remote teaching guidelines and overall messaging. And the group has met almost weekly. We've had two Wednesdays off, but pretty much straight, straight through for the last six or eight weeks. We have a community task force. It's also focused on the COVID side of things. And that's made up of members from the Village of Diamonddale, Delhite Township and all parts in between, including school, government, police, fire, food bank and religious and business leaders. And we meet weekly and we've met 28 weeks in a row, continuing to share ideas on how we can better serve our students moving forward. This morning, we met, a, a small group of us met the president of Lansing Community College. It was a wonderful conversation. Trustee Backen actually set him, set it up, but Lucas Schrauben was there and we were able to talk a little bit more about what makes Holt Public unique and our more flexible system. And it was, it was, I left extremely energized. Speaking of energy, I've never seen our HEAT team more organized and energized than it is right now. And that's our Holt Equity and Access Team. I've been around for 27 years. As you know, I've been a part of the HEAT team. And now granted, we were on hiatus for a while, for approximately 20 years, but I've never seen it so energized and ready to take action. So we are doing some very good work there. We have received a report that a student at the Wilson Talent Center tested positive for, for COVID. And to that end, that particular cohort will, I believe, be going online accordingly. And that impacts the entire county. That's why everyone was notified. So. And speaking of COVID, when we learn of a positive case, either of a staff member or a student, we work closely with our Health Department. And they help with the messaging, they help with how to notify people who may have been a close contact. And it's great to have those partners. I meet every Tuesday with Barry Eaton or Eaton Barry Health Department. And then last Wednesday I was on with the the Inham Health Department and it's good to have have those partnerships so close. And our HR department is really doing a great job monitoring accordingly. We have some preliminary audit results based on a conversation I had with our new auditor. Things look pretty good in whole public. The auditor shared that Kim and her team are doing a fantastic job and together they make a wonderful group. He also mentioned that when firms transition and President Perry, you may you may have the same feeling when firms transition following a longstanding relationship, it's often like a first date. And in our case, he referenced we had a good first date. So they'll be here in October to give you the formal update and I think a draft of those reports will be shared with you in advance of that. We are preparing to hold another town hall meeting that was well received, over 500 participants, but I think it's time for us to do some updating. You've heard me say this in the past, but the information regarding COVID-19 and and health recommendations changed so rapidly that it's time for us to to update our 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 community on what's new and and take their questions and have those answered. The last thing I'd like to share is in 2015, when the there was a posting for a new superintendent, there was some interest in promoting Holt beyond just our county. And so, you know, me being me, I've tried to do that accordingly and done it under the radar most of the time, but I was encouraged to share that since we went on summer intermission, I've presented with the Progressive Policy Institute out of, I believe that was Boston. I was on the BBC Radio in London and across England. I participated in an M A S B panel. And coming in October, I've recorded a a Making Meaning podcast and that's out of Detroit. So we're trying to just continue to share our message of empathy and how we care for one another. Each of those comes with a a unique perspective. A couple of them are the balanced calendar. One was just how are we preparing for the new school year? And then the Making Meaning podcast had a thread of pretty much all of that. So that brings us to the end of the superintendent's report.
Muted, Mr. Perry.
I should just not play with this thing here. We'll move to the Health Department School District Guidance Draft.
Okay, so in short, I have shared a Health Department School Guidance Draft for when what criteria and things that districts should consider when moving in and out of in person instruction. Now, I'd like you to know that this was shared with local superintendents. It was created by health departments across the state. So I believe there are 45 health departments across the state and each had a part in in creating this document, but it's not public. Okay, it was shared with us because our Health Department leader said it's time to get this in the hands of educational leaders. We'll be sharing it at some point with our union to use as a framework for consideration. You know, for moving forward, but it's still in draft form. And at this point, that's about all I have to say. There was a point where we had shared with you as a board that we were going to create our own. I think this is a good place to start calling on the experts around us, especially in the health field. So unless there are questions, I can move on to 5.8. Seeing none, I'm going to move on. I just want you to know that we continue to build capacity in our community and through this community task force and and our community task force has been called on to help us with their return to learn plan. They've been called on to help us with some messaging. They've been called on to give feedback. They are a nice cross section of our district and they are able to provide us, you know, with you know, thoughtful responses that they're hearing in the in the community. And then we're able to moving this organization doesn't generally happen fast, but we are becoming a little more nimble because of this amazing task force. They're able to share information with us accordingly. Some of you as board members have listened in. Some of you have been active participants. I I hope I'm representing that group well. They're a true asset for us. So and I welcome any other comments on any of those, including Ben, our our time with the the president of the Lansing Community College today.
Glad you found that valuable, just making those connections and Lucas did a great job. There wasn't much of an agenda for it to see where the conversation took us and where it took us was a over an hour meeting when I think we had 40 minutes slated. So just great dialogue. Even at that point, we had to cut it off. So thanks for your time in doing that today, Dr. Hornak.
My pleasure.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hornak. I just have a couple items. First, I want to publicly thank Laura Culligan for all her years on the board. As you know, she brought a lot of energy to the board, in particular things that she was passionate about and those things she was mostly passionate about dealt with the students. And one of the things she always said was, you know, we need to make the student first in our decision making. And I I think that resonated with a lot of us and I think she added a lot to this board. And she'll be missed. The other item is, you know, I continue to be concerned with the mental health of our staff. They're going through a lot right now. If like Dr. Hornak had mentioned, you know, you take our IT department, which was meant to do what it does in the buildings. And now you ask it to acquire, give to the public all of those computers and then address all of the needs. Plus, we change software. That's that's a lot and it's just not that department. You heard the first food service trying to serve 5,000 meals. You have teachers that are trying to go from classroom to digital and all the time trying to deal in a different environment in which, you know, they were just told this is what we're going to switch to. So my appeal is to to everyone. Look, staff are doing the best that they possibly can and they want to do a very good job. We just need to come together as a community and just make sure that, you know, we're helping one another and 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 that looking over and finding fault with each other. So please, you know, again, our staff are really working hard.
President Perry, may I also say that entire facilities department so much is being asked of them to keep our building safe and secure for the the people who do come in, including food service and including teachers and other staff to prepare lessons. And that is a Herculean task and I'm just really grateful for all of the amazing work that that department is doing as well.
Yeah, it's all departments. Thank you. All right, we'll move to curriculum. Steve and Jessica, I'll let you guys.
All righty. Good evening. And I'm going to start out and Jess can I and go back and forth and just a couple of quick things. And Mr. Perry, you touched on it and I know it's shared in public comment. Mrs. Dalton, you just added. I agree, you know, we're nine days deep into remote learning and it feels like 90 days with the preparation. And, you know, as a a employee of whole public, but also a parent working with 12 different teachers, I've also been very impressed of the work that's happening with my own kids. And I think that's a reflection of what's happening across the district. And I had a chance today to visit a couple of buildings following safety protocols, you know, signing in, doing the whole thing. And you know, I shared at a group earlier, I was very impressed with the building that I was in with the the cleanliness of it and the readiness of that building and the work the custodial staff. And also, it was very, very eerie, but also rewarding to walk through the halls and you hear all the teachers in their classrooms teaching to kids through the computer. So you could hear voices, you could hear kids laughing. So again, I'd just like to compliment the staff for the work. And I also think it's really important. The building principals are are dealing with a lot. They're having to be flexible. There's a lot coming at them. So I want to thank them as well for the work they've done over the past month and a half to get to this place. So so thank you to those two groups. So so quick things, I want to start with enrollment update and I'm going to use the word ish at the end to leave for some gray because we are still not near count day. It is October 7. We also are still checking in with kids. The secretaries are doing an amazing job reporting to Holly to see who's around, who's dropped. Building principals are still working to reach kids. So there's still some things are unknown. In addition, we still have kids enrolling. You know, last week I double checked and I think the number was around 35 kids enrolled last week. So we project that it's going to continue. One thing I do want to throw out there is as a group, I heard this this team discuss on the number 250 for a loss. I think you're pretty close. When we get down to actual Holt kids that we have lost for whatever reason and or time share in those pieces, I think that we were we're going to be pretty close to that number. So a couple of things I want to highlight with you with enrollment is, first, I want to say that when we look at the loss of students, there's all these different reasons, especially in in COVID. You know, I will say that when I look at the high school numbers initially, it looks like they might actually be up a few. So that is a that is a number that I would like to investigate more. And I think that's a compliment to the work with the secondary systems and retaining those kids. We also knew that there's a lot of unknowns with our our five, four and five year olds with kindergarten because it's not mandatory until the age of seven. We we were very skeptical and I believe the low numbers in kindergarten is going to reflect a big portion of our loss, which we kind of knew. You know, overall, I would say out of our what we'll see as a loss, we will see about 40 to 50% of that coming from the K4 buildings are elementary. And so those are just kind of some initial things I wanted to share with you. We will know more as we get to count day, which is again, October 7. And we'll be able to take a deeper dive and to look at grade levels, grade spans and talk about where we're at with our student enrollment. So any questions with enrollment at this part portion of the year?
Steve, did you mention that the 250 included the shared time?
Did not.
Did not?
Did not.
You good on enrollment?
Unless there's any other questions. Yep, I'm good.
All right. I just wanted to share a brief tech update with you. As David mentioned earlier, you've all acknowledged the technology department's been working quickly, flexibly, furiously to get all students and families into all the systems they need access to. We did have have a couple breakthroughs last week. We had a large shipment of Chromebooks delivered, which was a huge relief. So all students who need a Chromebook now have one. We also have extra in case one gets broken and a student needs a replacement. We are still waiting on more. But for now, we're we're in an okay spot. We also had, I don't know if you guys know what the Michigan Data Hub is, but it's the central repository of student information at the state of Michigan. Our Power School talks talks to it. And we were having trouble getting them to talk, which meant a lot of our systems like Ames Web and Amplify Science and our online textbooks were not able to harness that information and populate those programs. And as of like Friday at 5 o'clock, I got the message that they're talking, they're talking. So I know those things sound kind of like, oh, what is it? But it's very exciting in the department because I at this point, we have between 5 and 700 tickets still that we're trying to respond to. And when you make a big breakthrough like that, it sometimes resolves lots and lots of tickets at one time. So we are finding that the number of tickets we're getting through the home support email, homesupport@hpsk12.net has plateaued, which is a good sign. They were continuing to rise. What we're finding is the wonderful support of our building secretaries, administrators and teachers have kind of helped share the load of getting kids logged in and problem solving around issues to the point where I called today, I saw there were two high tickets in the ticket system. So I took a minute and and tried to resolve them and one of them needed a a reset and the other had already been taken care of. So that's what we're finding is some of the tickets kind of have been resolved. We just don't know until we call and check in with them. So we are seeing some some progress in some of our bigger questions that we'd had. Currently, we're working on, I don't know if you guys know that there's a security software and all the Chromebooks that go home to families. It's called Securely. It alerts our our tech department and administrators anytime a student searches a term or a phrase that may be considered high risk. So even on the weekend, if a student's on that Chromebook and looks up something that might be of concern, we are developed, we have a a procedure for reaching out to the family and letting them know in case there's a concern. So we're working to make that a little more robust, trying to determine when we would include Bill Bellinger potentially or include David or however many people we need as a part of those procedures to ensure whether it's, you know, a Tuesday at 2:00 PM or a Saturday night at midnight, that there's always somebody to respond. And in that, we've never really had that before where we've been as a district on alert anytime a kid, you know, is looking for something that, you know, maybe is worrisome. So it's actually, I feel like a good service that we've been able to offer considering, you know, the mental health concerns we have. Fortunately, many of the times what they're looking up are song lyrics. Turns out there's lots of song lyrics that have phrases in them that are a little bit scary, but for the few times it has been serious, we've been able to respond and I've appreciated the urgency around that from our administrators. So we have also posted, I I know you guys remember back in July, Paul took a position with another with another county and we've since posted his position. So we will be back to full capacity in the tech department. I heard audible cheers from a distance when I let them know that we were posting that position. So that will be very helpful in continuing to support. So, you know, kind of as you guys had mentioned, this is new for the tech department to not just be tech support for teachers and students during the school day, but to now be kind of a 24/7 support for our community. So I think it's important we be as fully staffed as we can be. Last thing, I know Amy had asked about the access points earlier, the six external access points that had were installed last week. Kevin is going to share with David to go out to the community, a map of where those access points are. They were selected based on what you'd mentioned, population density and lack of public access to Wi-Fi. So they tend to be spread out, but still somewhat close to buildings. They have to be attached to a building, but then they have, I believe, a 200 foot space around them that they project out into. So for example, there's one like kind of between Sycamore and the junior high. And then there's one by Midway. And so you'll you'll see those maps and they are kind of spread out throughout more populated areas. In addition, we're waiting on hotspots from Verizon. We ordered 125 of those. We have a list of students waiting for those hotspots. In the meantime, I never imagined it would take so long to get them. Guessing demand is high. We are looking at a procedure to bring students for the junior high and high school at least potentially to bring them into spaces that we can keep clean, sanitized, follow protocol for the students who are unable to access Wi-Fi during the day. We feel obligated to ensure they are able to access their education and we're doing what we can to to figure out how to do that. Any questions on technology?
All right, I'm gonna move on to 6.1.3, which is in-person instruction protocol. I believe it's funny, I was going back to my memory. I could remember if it was July or August. It was July when the board voted, I believe, to move to remote learning. I kind of wiped that away and moved forward, but and one of the one of the comments by multiple board members, I believe, was as to as a district to put forth in front of us, talking about our special populations and students and how to best meet their needs. And, you know, as we hear a lot of great things happening, we continue to receive some emails of some families that are struggling for many different reasons. And I I greatly appreciate teachers are responding, building principals are responding. Um, and I, I greatly appreciate teachers are responding, building principals are responding. I watched a secretary today at a building take four Chromebooks through a sliding window to help a parent, did the work and handed them back to the parent. So I know a lot of things going on, but I do know there's some still struggles. And so since that conversation and a lot of the credit goes to the special education department and director, um, Melissa Stewart, they really worked on putting together a protocol or in-person instruction. And with that protocol, we have added on to this group, um, beyond special ed. And we've also been vetting a lot of this through HR. Um, so thank you to Peter and Aaron for the work with this. And in addition, we are continuing to have conversations with our staff. And so you guys have a copy of the protocol in your packet, I believe. Um, I'm not sure, what is it, page 76 it looks like. Um, this is a protocol that was worked on with the facilities department as well, um, about the cleaning portion. Um, and so what I wanted, what I'm putting this in front of you is to give you an opportunity to ask questions. Um, another thing I want to share with you that's not in the board packet is we've kind of put together a timeline of, um, these groups coming in. And again, we still have, um, some collaboration with our staff to do, we're working with facilities. But, um, you know, in the moment, we have some students that are entering into, um, our district, um, as EL students. And we have some screening to do with them. That service has been started by our EL, um, staff. I know, I believe our psychologists, um, have started to do some evaluations, um, with some students. And now I believe we're moving into, looking into our basic classroom students and other special populations, um, uh, receiving some service. Um, so I kind of wanted to share with you the protocol we're using for safety. Um, we're thinking small and kind of start building. Um, I also want to acknowledge, you know, we have currently, you know, early, uh, midway, early child center has kids coming in and out of the building and they're servicing small groups. Um, we have childcare in some of our buildings that are servicing small groups. And so we're using those protocols and what they're learning to help prepare, um, to provide some support for our students that are, um, through a process showing that they need some face-to-face support. Um, what has been created is a rubric and the rubric is really acknowledging, um, the, some of the, the areas that kids are struggling, specifically whether it's engagement with technology, whether it's the academic behavior. And we're using this rubric to gauge what students we possibly could bring in for some support. You know, I've had a lot of questions be asked, what is the timeframe? Um, you know, as Mrs., as Melissa Stewart would say, it's going to vary on the student. For some, we're hoping to get in a couple of times a week for maybe 10 to 20 minutes. For some, if we can keep them a little bit longer, we will do that. So it's going to be really interdependent on the kid and what we can provide for them and what is working best for them. So I again, wanted to give you an update on where we're at with that and to see if there's any questions um, in regards to the protocol and servicing our special population.
Steve, I don't know this is the time, but in, on page, um, 74, the kind of chart that has the risk determination on the one side and the, um, spread indicators, could you talk just at a high level about that chart a little?
Um, I'm going to try to find it right now.
Sure. Part of the health officer framework for consideration for school built, buildings, increasing and decreasing intensity of in-person instruction. If that's not your document, then?
It's not my document, but?
Okay.
Um, I can look at and address in a follow-up email.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah. So you mentioned, um, we have some schools within our district or buildings within our district we're, we're learning from. What about any feedback or input from other districts that have gone to in-person instruction? What are we learning there in terms of what, what's working or what's not?
So I am not aware at this point of, I have not, at least from my end, reached out to any schools that are, whether they're full-time in person or whether they're hybrid. Um, I have been channeling a lot of the learning through, um, what Heather Crandall has provided with the safety protocols used at, um, Midway and also the guidance, um, through with Melissa Stewart. So, you know, what we do know then is that we have to consider, um, what needed PPE materials to make people feel comfortable, the safety, make sure that's in place. We need to really make sure we have a clear protocol on the cleaning in between, you know, those type of things. So, you know, that is why we're moving very slow, one or two students at a time. Um, but as far as larger systems bringing back kids, I've not, um, reached out to a Charlotte or I have not reached out, you know, um, another neighboring district. Uh, St. John's was supposed to be in person, so I have not.
Right. And maybe? That's fine.
Yeah.
And that's fine, I wouldn't expect maybe you'd have those conversations. But I will say Dr. Hornak, that's something that I will be very interested in. I've shared that with Jason Milma and other conversations too. I mean, I think that's one of the more valuable things that we could be getting is just, you know, actual experiences of what's working and what's not for those schools that have made a choice to do face-to-face right out of the gate.
All right, so I'll be honest, Ben, I lost my agenda, so I'm not sure who's next. You got?
We're just barely getting by. Are you good with the in-person instructional protocol?
Unless you guys, I, you know, we can follow up and I don't know, I know Dr. Hornak, you've talked about some walkthroughs. I'm not sure if you've got to that point yet or not, but, okay.
One thing I just want to say as, as we work through this is just to, um, be really aware of our staff and what we are asking of them when we start asking them to service both online and in-person students that, one, we have to address their, um, safety and health concerns being in person. And then also just, just the workload concerns of, of servicing multiple, um, venues of, um, uh, delivery. So, um, I'm sure you are considering that. I just, I just want to put voice to that just because, um, what, what we hear from staff is how, um, how much work this is and how they're, they're stepping up and gladly doing it. But, um, when we, when we look in the long-term, we want to just make sure that, um, we're not pushing um, to a point where, um, you know, where we're going to create problems further down the line. So I just want to be aware of that balance when we start adding, um, students in person.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I think we can shift to the extended continuity of learning plan, which, um, we're going, Steve and I are going to go through the assurances on page 80 of the board packet. Um, the, I don't know if you had a chance to read through all of it. The intention, the extended continuity of learning plan is, um, from the state of Michigan, you may remember last spring, we had to do a continuity of learning plan that got approved. Um, this is the same, we will need approval, need a vote on this tonight. So we're going to go through the pieces with you. Um, the intention of the document, I believe, is to ensure, um, academic growth for students, to ensure that we are considering certain factors when we choose to stay remote or choose to go face-to-face. Um, and then also to ensure transparency and public comment and a lot of communication with our community. So we'll kind of go through the pieces of it with some thinking around how we're going to implement it. Um, you all knowing that it does require a vote, it is due to the state, uh, no later than October 1st. Any questions on just what it is, what we're doing? All right, um, then I'll go through just this first part here, uh, that it, the number one at the top, um, that we will have to make this document in its entirety available on our website under the transparency badge, where we keep, um, all of our financial reporting and all, all the other pieces under there.
So moving on to assurance two and three, I'm going to tag those two together. So two and three are really speaking to, um, growth as Jess just mentioned. So they're asking, um, they provide a template where, um, the district will have to identify goals in, uh, reading and math. And it'll have to be a goal that's at the middle of the year. So it's growth from fall to the, till February 1st, and then there'll be, um, the end of the year. So with that growth model in place, which I appreciate versus proficiency, with that growth model in place, we'll be, uh, responsible for providing you guys the growth or the goal. And then we'll also be, um, responsible for providing the data. And in addition, um, you'll notice that we also are responsible for, um, for subgroup data as well. So considering, um, the goals, which we're very familiar with through district improvement plan and school improvement plans, and considering the sub, um, subgroups, we really wanted to take in consideration some of the current data we collect. Um, and if you look at assurance three, it's requesting or requiring, I should say, the benchmark assessments. And so it really, it really hones into, um, K8 with the benchmark assessments. And Jess will talk later more about the targets and where those fall in. But, um, it, as the language speaks to, we have to assess within the first nine weeks. Um, and then again, we have to provide no later at the end of the year. So these are some of the accountability pieces, I believe. We've always benchmarked as a district. We've always created goals as a district. And so it's just kind of formalizing this and we are required, um, to include this and report back to you, um, as the year progresses. Um, any questions with two or three with the benchmark assessments, um, and/or the goals?
And for now, it, it, we're, I'm sure you guys are familiar, we, we're using Ames Web Plus and NWA to do our benchmarking. Um, and for now, the goal is all students will be at grade level, um, or will make progress towards one year's growth. Um, but until we do the fall benchmarking, we won't know really where kids are. That's kind of the question a lot of districts have is because of the circumstance in the spring, coming into the fall, we haven't administered these yet. So we will have data for you in February. That's where we started here in the fall and what we see in February.
And Jess, I'm glad you brought that up. And I also want to clarify, we've been very conscious about what we're asking our staff to do with benchmark assessments because it's, it's not only time consuming in the building, but it's, it's a whole new process. Like we've never done it online. And so, um, I'll be honest, we, we used, we had a very robust suite of benchmark assessments. We chose to skinny down and provide, um, meet the requirement, but also think about if we, we're doing this, which ones give us the most benefit for the data we're getting and which ones tie most closely to our instruction that happens in our classroom. And so the, the benchmarks are a one data point, keep that in mind, but it's something that we are required to do and we're intentionally, um, reducing the amount of assessments we're giving. So, thank you for bringing that up, Jess.
And that kind of slides into number four. Um, the first bullet being equitable access to technology, which is a part of the tech update. The sense of urgency we feel to get every student a device and every student internet is very high. That's how they're accessing their education, they need to be able to access those accounts. And that's just step one for kids and it's learning the tools. Um, the second bullet there about exposing each people to the academic standards that apply. Um, we spent quite a bit of time in August with our teacher leaders reviewing our curriculum and ensuring that, um, there are priority targets that we want students to achieve mastery on. There are ancillary targets that, um, we would like students exposed to. Uh, but kind of thinking about what, what we, one of the themes of the night is addressing also the mental health and social emotional needs of our students and staff that we want to provide, um, some flexibility in the number of standards and the level of proficiency on them so as to be responsive to the needs of students as we move through this process. So, um, we have well-documented every standard, every unit. And I think that's provided some comfort in that people are able to focus their instruction when they develop those weekly learning plans. And they're, they know, families know what the targets are for the week. So, um, as a part of your board packet, there is the remote learning plan, which, um, I think we have shared, you've seen. And it has hyperlinked within it, the targets document. Um, so you can look at any class and see what the targets are for any unit.
All right, um, Dr. Hornak, I don't know if you want to toggle in and chime in. And it might go to what Mr. Bachin's question was a little bit, I still didn't get to that document. But five and six talks about a consultation with, upon the health and when we return. And so Dr. Hornak, if you want to chime in on this a little bit?
I do, so, um, all of the assurances listed here are included in that draft document that the health, uh, department directors have prepared. So, um, I'm very comfortable with that, although, um, the fact of the matter is we still need to go in and find, uh, find how it applies to Holt and work with our, um, employee groups as well as get that final draft from the health department.
That was discussion on number five.
That was five and six is, uh, if we are going to be providing in-person instruction, um, uh, you know, if it's safe to do so, it needs to for sure be K through five and it can belong on that, but yes.
Okay, so I'd like to spend a little time on number five because I think this is where, this is the one, um, that I'm reading and rereading and rereading again. So this is saying that, the method of delivery is going to continue to be our decision and we will, by the way, how's my sound? I know it hasn't been good all night, can you guys hear me okay? Okay, thank you. So I agree with making database decisions. I agree with all of this information being relevant to the decisions that we make, but, but this is a, this is a heavy lift, number five. I mean, just compiling all that and providing it to us, where does that come from? And, and how do we, how do we share that and how do we visualize that? I mean, there's a lot of information there for us to be evaluating. How, I mean, what's the process look like for that? Is the district gathering that or is the Ingham County Health Department gathering that or where?
Um, so this guide here, which is embedded in there, should be helpful to that. And the Ingham County Health Department has these different, uh, you know, county level risk determination and then building and district spread indicators. And then you move accordingly, um, through. Again, there's a lot of work to be done on this, Ben, but, um, the health departments have tried to make this easy and understandable from their side of things. It may not be for, um, a school district, uh, to completely understand, but we're going to be working closely with our health department, uh, partners as well.
Sure, and, and the chart, the colored chart makes sense to me, but if, if what we're approving today is these are the assurances that we as a district are giving to our learning community essentially?
At least those.
And, and that number five, I, I mean, I still remain curious of where, because the, the, the chart is simple, low, medium, high. That this is a lot of content with a lot of different factors of positive cases, hospitalizations, um, COVID deaths. You know, and then our, I don't know, I'm, do you see what I'm saying? I'm still confused, I guess, a little bit of, are we taking all of this data and content and saying, yes, it's okay for face-to-face now? I'm not comfortable with that, I mean, I guess.
Uh, the health department has a, uh, a dashboard, both do Eaton County, uh, Eaton Berry as well as Ingham County. Uh, most of this information that, that you're seeing in front, uh, shows up on there. But I can tell you, there are several other sites that are available. Um, in fact, I've worked with a, a couple of you as board members to determine which ones are, um, you know, more accurate than others.
Okay, so then this is fine. I just, I guess, I just want to be clear that if, if what we're approving is assurances to our learning community that we are considering these key metrics, at least in terms of the decisions that we make, then it's going to be on the district to provide that information from reliable sources in a clear, understandable way so that we can look back and say, yes, we, we made these decisions based on data. That's a heavy lift under that number five. That, that's really the only one or this document I have questions about.
Uh, it is a heavy lift and it's a heavy responsibility and it's one we're not taking lightly.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Vernon.
I too had a question under five. I think the numbers are easy to come by, but the one that's, you know, probably got some objectivity is, what, what is health capacity strength? That, that's not a number, is it? Is it, or is that some? I don't know what that is.
It actually can be estimated by the number of ICU beds they have available in the, in the, in the region. That's one of the ways they estimate health capacity strength. I think there's indirect ways to get an idea of how many people are needing care in the system. And I think that's what that's trying to get at.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you. Did, did we cut you off Jessica and Steve? Were you on through the document or?
We're still, we're still going.
We're going.
All right, so I think seven's me, right Jess? Yeah, so number seven just talks- Yeah, so number seven just talks about, if you read the few bullets, the first three talk about the method of instruction that we, um, shared with you and our plan, our remote learning guide is continued to be reconfirmed or followed through. So we'll continue to bring back to you any changes that might possibly come about. And that is our responsibility to add that to the remote learning guide and highlight that for you. And the last bullet is, um, pretty important and I have the documents here. And it, what it's reflecting is getting on public comment and soliciting public comment in regards to, um, how things are going. And you know, one, one of those venues of public comment is in these board meetings. And we, um, we'll have to work with Ms. Lopez about the documentation within this form that goes in the public comment. We're also, um, working with, and it's down in your agenda. We're also working with what is a possible, what does a survey look like? And so the links that you have in your agenda are hot links and we would really, um, like your thoughts and your opinions on those survey questions. We rolled it out to the building principals last week. Um, Jess and I just put some questions together just to get the conversation going. And we want to, we want to keep the questions, um, limited. We want to keep the questions real and make sure they're flexible from the first time we give it to the next time and we're responding to what our community needs. And it also was shared by our building principals that they want the autonomy to tweak or add a few questions that might be more respectful to their building and what's going on and maybe some things that they're hearing. So we, we think it's important to survey all three groups. And I would say that our administrators and directors would fall under the staff one. I think it's important to get their feedback. But we also know we want to do it different than the spring. And we are, so we're seeking feedback from you guys in regards to questions, seeking feedback from our building principals. And then we, um, will roll out a procedure document for the questions. Um, we do want the survey results to go back to the building and have the principal an opportunity to kind of dig through and, um, make some big buckets. And then as a district, we will collect some big bucket data and provide that to you guys. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, provide some feedback, um, things you're hearing, things that we want to seek from our public. And it's, it's a responsibility of, of the district to every 30 days or every board member or every board meeting to bring this back to your attention and share out the results.
May I make a comment about the surveys?
Absolutely.
So, um, I, I was, I, I understand that this is required and I think it's fabulous. I was in a, in a meeting today where we discussed surveys and, um, maybe survey, I'm not sure what the term is, um, you know, overload. And what I, what I'm hearing is the amount of effort people are willing to put into a survey is, is directly proportional to how much action they feel like this survey will elicit. And so I just want to invite you to consider at the start of the survey, just clearly stating what your intention is. So maybe this is together information that we have to report to the state. Or this is to, um, provide information to building principals on how they can better, you know, so that as someone is taking it, they see, oh, this is worth my time because I know that if I make these comments, there will be this action that follows. Because I think that there is some feeling in the committee that I was on today, that group is, is guilty of that, um, as much as any group of doing surveys. And then, you know, maybe we don't act on, on all of the feedback that we get. And it, it just leaves people less interested in filling out the next survey if they don't feel like, um, it led to any sort of change in, um, procedures. So, um, I, I just think if you lead with, with a good explanation of, of what your intention is, that that may get stronger buy-in from people proceeding.
And I appreciate that comment and our building principals have the same response. If we're going to do it, let's, let's find a way to do it where it helps drive and inform our next steps. And let's not make it stagnant. Let's make it, you know, flexible enough to meet where our community is or whatever group is at that time. So they're on board with that, we're on board with that. It's just, and the other piece is we've had a lot of conversation of a quick click of a multiple choice or, uh, open-ended response, right? They both have their benefits. You know, the open-end response, you know, it takes a lot of time to sort and you gotta look for keywords. Versus the other one, you might get more participation, which one, you know, so the structure. You know, I partnered Jess over here tells me how invalid a lot of these results are anyways. But, you know, we keep coming back to this is what we need to do to solicit from our, our community. And let's, let's do the best we can with it. So thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Um, I think it's me again, eight, um, special ed. And so, um, I want to, again, we started this meeting or this part with talking about our special ed department and our support staff are doing an amazing job, um, reaching out and supporting our, um, our specialized students. They keep learning more each week as the, as our powers, um, above release information, um, in regards to requirements. And so, um, within your packet, you have a few paragraph explanation that, um, this is Stuart added that addresses this assurance. And I just wanted to know if you had any questions, um, in regards to this portion.
All right, and the last part, number nine, uh, is about attendance. And, uh, if there's been a difficult part of remote learning, like surprisingly difficult, it has been attendance. And I feel awful for the teachers implementing the attendance procedures. They've changed every week since school has started. I think as of the creation of this document, which we got September 2nd, we've got some guidance from the state. We now know, uh, that we need two, two-way interactions. So not just attendance head count, but you have to interact with kids. Unfortunately, they are allowing us to count a Google Meet where we talk, um, for 75% of our students at least, uh, two times once a week. So that's been, um, a bit of bookkeeping for our teachers that in the past they've been able to just click present in the system. And now it's a giant Excel spreadsheet and I just really appreciate their patience in figuring out how attendance has worked. Um, we will be reporting those, uh, weekly interaction rates to you at the next board meeting. So you'll know, um, about what percent of our students are attending. As of right now, I've been very, um, impressed with the level of engagement of students. Uh, we do have secretaries and staff in our buildings who are contacting families who, um, they're not hearing from in the classroom. But it's been 90, 100% in a lot of classrooms. So I've been, I've been very pleased to see that. And I think that is all, um, as far as the assurances. And then what you will see in the following pages of this document, um, is a much more detailed language about the things we just told you. So what they did is they took each assurance, turned it into a question. And then we had to type all the things we just explained to you guys. So you can go through and read our answers as well. If you'd like to, some of them you've seen already. The stuff that's in italics is copied and pasted directly from the remote learning guidelines that we submitted in August. And I believe that's all for our part, other than, um, the approval of the plan or the vote on the plan.
So the plan is these two pages?
These two pages are kind of like the table of contents for the plan. The following like 16 pages are all the details we just shared with you only in writing because we have to submit it to the state.
So all 18 pages go in?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's what you're looking approval for?
I move that we approve the extended continuity of learning plan as described by Steve and Jessica and the supporting documents we have in our packet.
A second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Can I just say how grateful I am that, that the two of you and the rest of the administration have had the, both the capacity and the willingness to actually get this done. This, this, this looks like a mountain, literal mountain of, uh, work. And I'm just grateful that you've managed to at least take some steps up the mountain.
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Bureau, if we could have a roll call?
Elgin?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Bakken?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Bureau, yes, Perry?
Yes. Okay, motion passed again. Thank you, Steve, thank you, Jessica.
You guys.
Guys.
Uh, we'll move to general correspondence and the SRO report earlier. I thought I saw, um, Mr. Ballinger online. I don't know if he's still on or not.
He's there, his hand is up.
There we go, there we go.
There we go. Am I here?
You are.
All right, uh, good evening, uh, short and sweet this month, uh, which is a good thing. Uh, 53 calls for service, uh, most of which were just general calls in the public, not related to the school. Uh, five school checks, four hours, community policing and two hours of training. Uh, not a whole lot to report this month since there is still not a whole lot going on, uh, due to COVID. Uh, October 26th was, or I'm sorry, August 26th was the main thing. That was the Chromebook distribution at the high school and junior high. Stopped by both those events. Uh, they went smoothly. We had to help with a little bit of traffic over at the, uh, junior high. Aurelius Road got backed up a little bit, but we were able to get that cleaned up real quick and help them get that, uh, distribution process streamlined. So everything went well and that's all I had to report this month. And if anyone has any questions for me.
No, but I always love a short report from you. That's a, that's a good thing, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ballinger, or Dr. Ballinger, Deputy Ballinger.
I'll, I'll take the promotion.
All right.
It's not all it's cracked up to be.
All right, we'll move to the HR department and, uh, Dr. Quinlan, I don't know if this is, you're going solo or, uh?
Pete's here too. I, I'm starting and then he's going to, I think he has one point to add. But, um, as Dr. Hornak already mentioned and, um, Steve and Jessica, we've been working pretty closely with all of our staff related to our current health situation and making sure we're meeting all the protocols and procedures and processes. Just trying to keep everyone as safe as possible and informed as possible. You have a copy of the updated HR report for this month. We welcomed two new teachers, two administrators and one secretary to HPS this month. Um, we're continuing to ensure our postings are matching our current needs and look for the most qualified, diverse and well-rounded professionals to join our team. Um, I know Pete wanted to discuss one of the positions that we recently posted with you. I don't know if you had any other questions regarding the HR report.
I, I know that we've only, you only hired a few teachers and I'm sure that there's more openings than that. What's our situation with, uh, with filling those vacancies? Are we, we have long-term subs in there right now? What's going on?
Yep, so we only have a few leaves right now, um, and those are all filled with long-term substitutes. And we have a few, uh, positions at the high school that we're, um, filling as we speak. Interviews for one of those positions, um, is this week. Um, the other two were just finishing reference checks. So those positions are in the process of being built. So we're actually in pretty good shape right now in terms of teaching vacancies.
How did, how did that get covered for the first couple of weeks of school when they, when they didn't have a teacher?
So we, um, had some long-term substitutes and we also, some of our, um, coaches who, um, are certified in those high need areas filled in and have been working in those, um, classrooms with those students.
Thank you.
If there are no questions, Aaron, I am next on the agenda. And that has to do with an opportunity presented to us with the surprising resignation of our school accountant in the business office. She took a position in another ISD and a promotion for her and we wish her well. She's been a very valuable asset to Kim and the finance department for the about three years she's been with, three or four. But there's been discussions since I got here about having to plan for Kim Cosgrove's retirement. And there was even talk about hiring her replacement and having essentially a director and an assistant director while she trained. We think this opportunity that's presented to us with this open accounting position allows us to do that with one fewer employee than might have been the case. So we're proposing to create a position called Director of Finance, which is below the Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, but, uh, above the pay grade for the, uh, school accountant. That we would search for someone with extensive, uh, school finance background that could come in, assume the duties that were replacing from Carrie Newfer, but also work and hopefully be the person that would move into the position when Kim decides to hang up her, uh, pencil, uh, as the accountant. So, uh, why, I think since this is a new position, we felt we should bring it to the board for approval. It would be, uh, Director of Finance. It would be, uh, put at the level two of the administrative supervisory salary schedule, which is the same schedule that senior high principal and director of human resources currently on.
What, uh, opinion or feelings do you have, uh, just based on the amount of talent? I guess it's out there for this. Do you, do you expect a high number of respondents to this? Or do you think it's going to be a tough position to fill right now?
I think accounting positions at this level are going to be tough to fill. There may be some individuals that, uh, are ready for that, that Kim has come across in her, uh, work for the number of years that, that we may convince to hire. But we just got an application today from a, a young man who's not ready for this. I mean, it's, it's, he's been with the school district for a little less than a year in a position considerably less responsible than the one we're looking for. So it won't ease, it won't be an easy position to fill. But, um, I think we would not have a chance to fill it unless we created a significant salary schedule so that we could fill it with someone that has some skills. It's not someone you pull in off the street.
Right, I agree with the approach. I'm supportive of it. I just, I'm curious, who do we think we're likely going to get? Do we think it's going to be someone coming from a finance, you know, a senior finance director role at a smaller district?
It could be that, it could be someone that's the assistant finance director in a larger district that wants to move up and be in charge. We're a fairly large district, so there aren't a whole bunch of them looking around that this pay scale would look comfortable to from a larger school district. But we could actually attract some people from ISDs, from smaller school districts, from, and in some ways, coming from a smaller district makes some sense because that individual probably had to do everything in the finance department. So they have a breadth of understanding, um, that we, we could work with. So we'll have to see what we get.
Right. Do we, Kim, and this is a question for you too. Do you think the person has to have school district experience? Or if you had a strong candidate, maybe from a municipal background, you know, who's, who's familiar with a similar type of accounting? Do you think that would work or do you think a school district is necessary?
Um, actually, um, I have reached out to a person at MDE. I have reached out to a person who is in a municipal governmental that I know. And also, um, one of our, uh, uh, another constituent in another district, I would say that. And so with varied responses, um, there is a lot of people who are changing jobs right now. And I think some of them feel like they're And I think some of them feel like they're the last man standing that builds any continuity. Um, I think, um, so people, and you have to respect that of people who want to stay because the whole organization will fall apart if they, you know, leave. But, um, so there's lots of things going on and, and I will continue to reach out to see if there's options for people.
But you think we could, it sounds like because you reached out the, on the possibility of, uh, someone, just for example, with a municipal background. Maybe we could cast a wider net with the job description, just to hope to get more applicants, you know?
Yep. My understanding is there's zero unemployment amongst accountants. So, um, and our accounting supervisor is getting a significant pay upgrade. So, and the person who left that position, what had a master's in governmental accounting.
I want that to be a, somebody, whoever the students are who are watching this in the background, um, just note that zero percent unemployment in accounting and
and we're not
perhaps choose accordingly.
We're not always boring.
Accounting is, is more fun than it sounds, right?
Yeah.
Well, well, Kim, as far as the, uh, that feeling of, of severe guilt and everything will fall apart if you leave and retire, you were referring to other people. But if you start to feel that way and want to work for another five more years, just know that that's okay. So.
Thank you.
You also have to remember that Kim came not from a school district, but from an auditing firm. So there are potentials, um, that have exposure. A municipal background is, is one piece. Schools are a little different. But it's stuff that can be learned if you're a competent and inquisitive accountant and CPA who wants to learn the, uh, the, uh, area. So I'm, I'm optimistic that we can find someone that can grow into the full position. But I don't want to take someone just to take someone. If, if we can't find an appropriate candidate, then we fill the accountant position and go back to the well later.
Going to have CPA preferred or required?
I believe the listing is CPA preferred, um, and other accounting backgrounds, uh, that would replace it, experience.
Kim, uh, in the meantime, you know, are you good with the FTE or do you need to do something different to fill, you know, what Kerry was doing so that we don't get behind?
Um, so Kerry has done an amazing job to prepare. We have our 4096 has been submitted already. I submitted that last week. Um, and we have to do a lot with the salaries for last year, our transportation. We are unable to pull the FID file right now. Skyward has not updated. So we would have done that and started working on that. And then our next big item that we would have would be the budget update. So the budget update for revenue, I would assume that I would be able to tell you that, um, by next board meeting. It is required by the state of Michigan to adopt their per pupil allocation before September 30th. And I would, uh, assume by the time we meet next month, we would have, um, a pretty good handle. Because I think count day would have, would have gone, we will know both sides of those calculations. So I, priority wise on a larger scale is the FID, um, which I will have to do. And have been involved in that, but to run the machines and the software and everything. So we'll do that. And then it will be to, we are already, actually Kerry has already started updating the budget for the salaries. So that is the big crucial one there. We have gotten some big grant money, um, from the, for COVID, the COVID funds and getting those allocated. So those would be the priority. So those are the big priorities that would come to you. On a daily basis, I have to tell you that the staff in the accounting department is amazing. And we have met, um, once with Kerry, twice without her to allocate all of her daily jobs. Like how do we get cash receipts in? How do we get, um, journal entries in? How do we, um, you know, do all of those daily tasks that we have? And they're all taking over bits and pieces. So we've got some duck around the whole department. And I'm going to take on some of those larger things that we have. So we got a plan.
All right. When that duct tape starts to unwind, you guys, yeah, make sure you raise your hand. Because in this environment, um, it's, it's all hands on deck. And I, I just don't want to see us, you know, go underwater. Figure something out, but you know?
Thanks. Yep.
So Pete, were you looking for an approval to, to fill that position then of Director?
I don't know that I need a formal approval, but I need a consensus from the board saying to move forward on this. And I think I've heard that from our, also the members, if, if there's any objection to the proposal, uh, now would be the time to raise it.
I don't think you're going to be able to get the person you want at a lower, lower pay grade than, than, it's going to be hard enough to get a person you want at the pay grade that you can offer. So, um, strike while the iron is hot. Find a good one.
We'll try.
Yep. I think it's a good plan.
All right. Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
HR, is that, uh, that everything then? All right. We'll move on to financial information. Cosgrove.
Sure. Under page 101 is your, um, first time you will have seen the budget for 2021 compared with the actual activity. And the only reason that I would mention this is that this year under the state, state sources, you will find close to $2 million. That is, um, actually all of that is a combined COVID. There are multiple grants in there. So they call one an Esser COVID Relief Fund, which is the $350. There are other, some state aid ones there. We received $12.15. Um, and there's some childcare money in there also for grants that Heather Crandall had, um, written. And so all of that money since the state of Michigan did not approve or designate until af- after June 30th, has to go into the 2021 year. And all I'm doing is noting that to you. So, uh, we are still working with the state of Michigan and all of their rules on how you can spend that money. So that would be the only thing I would have to say unless you had questions.
Any questions?
Um, then, I don't think you need approval of that. The next 8.2, the L4029, that is the, um, state of Michigan's form. It is the tax rate request for Eaton and Ingham counties. It will need approval by the Board of Education. It doesn't have an asterisk, but it will need one. This is a compliance. There is one for Eaton County on page 105 of your packet. And then you will also see Ingham County there too. There is two of them. And what it is doing is it is applying the millages that will go against the taxable values for our taxpayers. So after you approve these, what we do is we send them out to the tax, um, Ingham, Eaton County, um, Lansing. And then they apply those. That is how they start to generate the tax bills to come to all the taxpayers. The only item that I would note is if you would see under column six, we are in a headly reduction fraction mode. And so the taxable values last year or up until May increased at a greater rate than inflation. And so they apply that headly millage reduction and it takes them down to the increase. And, uh, we are, you had approved a headly hedge. As you can see, we have, um, 19.3171 mils authorized. Although as a school district, we can only apply 18 to those taxable values.
I'll make a motion to approve the L4029, 2020 tax rate request for both Ingham and Eaton County.
A second.
At first and second, any discussion? Kim, I just had one question. This Andrew at the ISD, he does both Eaton and Ingham?
Yeah. So they reconcile along with the attorneys for the property tax, um, the properties, the property tax values of the properties that used to be transferred between school districts before you had school of choice. And so with them and the attorneys, they reconcile all of them because hold, um, there are, you always, your ISD is your primary, what is your largest dist or port taxable value or the taxing unit? But you have those others. So he does both.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that he wasn't, that somebody else shouldn't be signing that.
Right. They're the ones who can put it together in totality. So we only have our portions of our taxable values. But then they balance between the, of the tax transfers, the property tax transfers.
Okay. Just Bureau, if you could do a roll call.
Bakken.
Yes.
Dalton.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Algren.
Yes.
Bureau, yes, Perry.
Yes. Okay. Edit out of the finance department? All right. We'll move to the calendar. Um, Dr. Hornak, is there dates there that you would like to point out for us or?
Uh, yes. Thank you, President Perry. Um, before I go too far, I just want you to all know how much I really appreciate the empathetic mindset that I'm hearing tonight. It's clear to me this board deeply cares for the students, staff and families we serve. Um, this is hard and extremely challenging work. And you know, you know, I worry about our learning community. And, uh, I'm very grateful for your, all, all of your leadership and service. To that end, um, a couple of things, we're moving into parent teacher conference week next week. No, in two weeks, I should say, count days on the seventh, but the next two dates are very important. October 12th, you heard trust, trustee Dalton speak to this. That's Indigenous Peoples' Day. And, uh, and we will not have school that day. Okay. So please be aware. That is normally when our next board of education meeting would be. However, um, because we're not in school, we'll be moving that to the 19th. And that decision was made back in July. I'm not making that, that, you know, I'm not changing anything on, on the public or you. Um, I just want to be clear that there'll be an extra week before our next board meeting. So normally people see that coming on the second Monday. It'll actually be the third. Then we roll into the next, uh, date on there is election day. And we have negotiated that day off with our, um, teachers union. Okay. So the Health Education Association has agreed to take that day off. And that, that's an added bit of security for our buildings as well as providing the grace and space to allow everyone that chooses to vote the opportunity to do so. Um, and then we move into November, Board of Ed, Thanksgiving. We have the calendar moving out to, um, the January 4th, the day the school resumes. So we're already looking at 2021. I think we can all agree that 2020, we all anticipated that to be that great year of 2020. Let's put that behind us. Let's move on to 2021. So there you go.
All right. Thank you. Old business. Move to new business. Uh, closed session. We have no need in our regular meeting. So that eliminates opening back up in the new session. Which leads us to item 14.
We, we have a, um, attendee with their hand up. I don't know what that person could be addressed or if we are not in a position to do that.
Yeah, we've closed public comment.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hornak, for everything. Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
At first and second, one last roll call, Miss Bureau.
Dalton.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Algren.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Bureau, yes. Mr. Bakken.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Stay safe.